Doris. Okay, if you could join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, welcome to the December 7th meeting of the Harvard Committee. People are filing in, but right now we have Tony Thayer, and we have John Parker, and we have Mary Ann Eddy and Lili Fell. I think Herb is on Zoom, but we can see. We have Brent Reiner from Nelson Pope Borjes and our producer, as always. And without her, Doris Alvarez.
And our counsel.
In our, I'm sorry Elizabeth, pardon me, no, 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 Elizabeth. They all are counsel, thank you, Lili. Usually Elizabeth is over here, so I need props, visual props. We're not going to read the minutes because we just got them.
Yeah.
So we're going to move through this quickly if we can.
What about the minutes from the prior, prior meeting?
We didn't approve them yet, yeah.
The October meeting, I believe we didn't approve.
Well, didn't you make a change, but other than the change, I thought we had approved them, am I wrong on that?
That was, that was correct. Yeah, they were approved on those changes. So Doris submitted the minutes, we'll review them at the next meeting.
Either that or maybe we can look through them at the end.
Right.
It's a short meeting, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to open this up to the public. Is there anybody here or in, please come up and introduce yourself.
Introduce myself again, Jim from the Sag Harbor Yacht Yard manager. I'm inquiring about the moorings in the harbor. I've been talking to Robert Bory, our harbor master, and trying to figure out how we're divvying up the new mooring field that they're putting in. And it just seems like there's a, I don't want to use the word monopoly, but I feel like it kind of is in favor of Ken Deed, the guy who runs it now. Robert Bory has asked me to provide a launch and dinghy docks and a whole bunch of amenities out of Sag Harbor Yacht Yard to pick up more moorings. So we came to an agreement to pick up about 26 new moorings in the field. And I'm providing a launch service out of our marina and dinghy docks and so on. But I've heard rumors of that there's a bid for the moorings. And I didn't know if that was true or not. And I just wanted to confront and see how that exactly works because I would like to have a say in bidding for more moorings for future revenue at our marina.
I just met with Bob about this, he has a new chart that is not, it was just Fred off the press.
Yeah.
And I asked him to come here with all the interested parties to present it. John is our resident mooring guy.
Okay.
I would defer to John and Mary Ann about the history, but the idea was to quantify through GPS.
Right.
I have heard that there is some issue about control, so what Bob was saying was that if you provide a launch and
Oh, we're doing it, we just spent, I just got approval for $100,000 for a launch boat. I'm putting in $30,000 give or taken floating docks for tender service because people have dinghies. So we're going to have floating docks for people to bring their dinghies in.
We need to see those.
And
Yep.
Right?
Where are you putting your floating docks?
They're, they're those little dock blocks, they're not a permanent structure, they're just like the ones that the sailing club uses like they attach to a mooring.
But where are you putting them?
Um, right off the side of our existing dock right there, so people have a place to put their little rubber boats.
Further north into the channel?
No, not into the channel, on the inside, on the east side of our floating docks that we have now.
On the east side?
It'll be on the sandbar side closer to Cormorea.
Yeah.
Okay, I was
Yeah.
Shallow.
Completely out of the way, like not blocking anything, not taking up any space on a useless sandbar that we can put closer for a place you use a boat that draws three inches of water. Trying to make this work and I'm getting approval to spend a lot of money. But I want to make sure that I'm spending the money in a direction that is for good foreseeable future. And I saw that plan that was fresh off the press. And Ken had the time to initial all the moorings he wanted, but I couldn't even hold it in my hand. And I just felt that that was a little unfair. And that's why I'm coming here tonight because I'm trying to see how I can work this out, you know?
Well, we, we need to get together with all of the people who have contracts for moorings because I've heard this from other parties. I haven't heard from Ken Deed, but I, and this is kind of out of my deal and it's more in Bob Borjes, but we
I think it's the village board of trustees.
Yeah.
I don't even think it's Bob Borje, I think it's the trustees that are the deciders on this.
The trustees.
Not the people you're looking at.
Okay, no, I just wanted to ask, I'm here to learn about this.
Yeah.
I'm obviously new in town and I'm just trying to
Well, we liked meeting you.
Make anything wrong, yeah, I want to make sure they're approaching us the right way.
Right.
I'm just concerned that there's more of a takeover from Ken than there is any other opportunity for people to do.
Well, he's been a longtime person there, the people have depended on him, but you're right, but I think you need to go to the village trustees.
What was your name again?
My name is Jimmy.
Jimmy.
Jimmy Shield.
Yes.
S C H E E D O. And I've taken over for three years since he retired.
Right.
And Lou has a long time history in this community, so people will give me mixed reviews on that, but at the same time, he's been running moorings longer than Ken has. And Ken actually learned from Lou, from what I understand. So I'm just here to try to take a chunk of it, not the whole thing, I don't want half, I just want a percentage of possible.
Well, there's another long-term player too, longtime player is Derek Galen.
Right, and I would like to sit with everybody and try to figure out a plan instead of just hearing.
Can you, can you present yourself and your case to the trustees at the next meeting?
When is that meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
And you know what, I'll, I'll talk to Derek because I actually just spoke to him about this this morning. But I think that you guys need to all get on the same page. And part of that page is how do you guys feel about a pump-out facility?
Um, I have no problem proposing this to my bosses and owners, that's not a problem.
Right.
If they see a foreseeable future where there's profitability in it, they're all for it. Hence me getting the money to buy new dorm or moorings and all the equipment that comes with them. A new launch service, putting in docks for a dock system for little vendors, I mean, they're willing to spend it where, you know.
And protecting the environment and doing the best
Right.
Ensure where you're lucky enough.
This is beautiful here, I love working here, this is like my best part of my day is being here, so.
Where do you go at night?
Unfortunately, I live in Iceland, so I'm driving
Yeah, that is unfortunate. With the traffic, so the trustees all have varying different responsibilities, they're liaised on to different parts of the village. And the person who liaises to us and to the docks and harbors is Jean Kane. So she might be somebody you want to reach out to
Okay.
as a way to approach the trustees rather than catching her flat-footed.
Meaning contact her before the next trustee meeting.
That's what I was thinking. Jean Kane.
Taking notes of this, um, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're kind of just on the same page because I just, I was a little upset with Ken got a chance to initial what he was looking for and I could just look at it from a distance, but I couldn't even hold my hands to propose mooring charter, which they, it was really nice, Robert Borje approached me and asked me, how do you feel about cleaning up the way that the moorings are on the harbor and making them more, and I said absolutely, I will work with you guys any way I can, but I just want to make sure that I'm getting a piece of the pie and not just moving my moorings out of the way for somebody else.
Yeah, the, yeah, I think, I think I think Mr. Borje has done, quantifying it, putting on GPS makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
How many moorings do you guys have now?
Uh, right now, from Robins Island at the Montauk, there are
No, 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 in Sag Harbor.
In Sag Harbor, maybe 25, 30.
Really?
Yeah.
And how many would you like?
Are you talking about outside the breakwater?
Oh, inside, outside, inside the breakwater, I think we have eight or nine. And outside the breakwater, I think we have eight or nine, it's not a whole lot, where Ken has 80-plus.
Oh, I don't think so.
Oh, I've been out there, I've watched them stake them, oh, I know, so, he's off my docks taking them, I can go out there and count the stakes right now.
But you're talking about
I got eight.
Are we talking about inside the breakwater or outside?
No, we're talking about outside.
Inside and outside.
Well, they're not 80 moorings outside the breakwater.
Know what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I don't have the, the actual thing in front of me, but it's up near between 70 and 80, I guess.
Well, it's good you're bringing this up now because I think the harbor master has been looking at this, we've looked at it. You're a new player in town and that's great and
I want to make sure I'm playing fair, I'm not looking to cheat anybody out of anything, but I just, you know, if we're going to spend this money that they're asking us to spend, have to have a reason to justify spending.
Fair enough.
So, and I just had a huge meeting today with them, they've approved spending on the launch, the docks. It's easily $130,000 in moorings that we're looking at, just in the metal that goes in the water.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a lot
Yeah.
to be asking for to then have to justify using, so.
Speak with Jean first and then
Jean Kane.
Pump out, think pump out.
I'll see what we can do with that, yeah.
I, I was on a call because there was great interest in your ownership in having a connection to the sewer system.
Yes, they're allowed to spend money on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that was a call some months ago, what's her name, what's her name?
Acme Marine.
Yeah, it is Acme, yeah.
Acme Marines.
And
One of seven.
They were saying, well, we, we have experience with this, we've just put one in in the Chesapeake or something like that, so you can just say you heard it again from the harbor committee how interested they are in having pump out.
Yeah. They're looking to chip in for that, I know that for a fact, because I had a meeting about that again too. Because we're not looking to change anything about this place. All we're doing so far is just cleaning it up
Right.
because it's really needed, and if you guys have a chance to stop by, then please stick your head in the door and walk around. If you remember what it was even three years ago and walk in there now, you'll see what I'm talking about. I am just cleaning the mess up, it was
Are you talking about the office, you're talking about the
The yard, the office, you name it.
Any, any chance of getting Kenny back in there?
I'm working, believe it or not, I'm working on it, and that actually, that's a whole different topic.
Getting what?
It's sore for me, I just called him last week, I am pushing extremely hard to get him to come back. The problem is, it wasn't Acme Marine that pushed him out.
No, I understand all of that.
Yeah.
He, he's, if there's an, if there's a historic iconic guy
Yeah.
everybody knows, he's one of those people and yeah, and I think he'd do a lot better financially, probably.
Tell me who you're talking about.
He's the bait and tackle guy, you know, this, this is off topic, but if you, let, keep us posted and if there's anything we can do.
What I'm working on now is I'm working on getting him into our ship store.
Yeah.
If you've been in the ship store, when you come down the stairs, that whole area to your left, I'm trying to make that bait and tackle for him.
Great.
Because I can't, he won't lease the property he was in, the area he was in before, when he just signed a 10-year lease in his new place.
Yeah.
We get traffic four or five times a week, at least right now, even people looking for him to come in for bait and tackle, it's awful, I feel terrible, I call him all the time. We're working on him coming sometime second week of January to take a look and trying to talk numbers and figure out how to get, logistically get him there. Even just to sell some gear, some bait, something out of our store, because we lost a lot of business because he left.
Yeah.
And a whole lot of thought was given to that, and it's really upsetting because he was definitely a fixture there, so.
Okay, Jimmy, thank you.
Hold on a second, I haven't said anything yet here, so, yeah, we're missing something here, okay? Is that the, the village does not have exclusive jurisdiction over that area.
Of course.
You know, the, well, the, the agreement that was part of the extension of Sag Harbor's authority over that area was that it would have joint jurisdiction with the East Hampton trustees. And that any changes to be made for that area, you know, are supposed to be agreed to with the trustees, and there was a committee set up that was, that was agreed to. So as far as I know, none of that has been, has been, has been done, so, so I wouldn't count on anything that you've been told as, as being, you know, concrete or agreed to unless it goes through the proper, you know, proper process.
And that's why I'm here tonight.
In, in addition, you know, I, I know that a request has been made to set aside certain areas which are environmentally sensitive or where they're trying to, whether eelgrass beds or whether they're trying to reintroduce eelgrass. And, and I know that the mayor, what was, has told me that he's in favor of that and in favor of setting forth those areas, so I have no idea whether those areas are included in the map or not included, but
From what I saw, the map is exactly what it's been.
Right.
They've just organized how nice and neat they're putting the moorings out, so like last year, from what I understand, Lou went out and just put a mooring out here, a mooring out there, he didn't really have a system to it. This year, they're going to do the small boats closest to, from what I saw, closest to the entrance through the breakwater. And then outside that, the ring of medium boats, and outside that, a ring of larger boats.
Correct.
Kind of working your way out by songs, and they're capping the yacht size to 150 feet.
Damn.
That's what I'm saying, I said damn, but actually if people are calling already, that stinks, but it is what it is.
Well, again, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying anything against the plan or, you know, it sounds like, it sounds like a good idea, I'm just talking about the process. That we have to go through, through a process on this and just so that you don't get stuck with assuming that something has been approved when it hasn't gone through the process.
And that's exactly why I'm here, because I want to make sure that before I kind of check to pay for all the things we're doing, that I'm stepping in the right direction before I just go ahead and spend money I think we don't need. So, so Tuesday night, I'll see everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, nice to meet you, pump out.
Pump out, I can't make any promises on that, but I appreciate it, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people in the public that would like to speak?
You're on the agenda, you're not part of this.
Okay, so let's move on to decisions. Is there somebody here for, for Notre Dame?
Yes, someone's, uh, gives you.
Okay.
David.
I have a message from Herb saying he can't get into the meeting. I can't get into the meeting with the meeting ID and password that I got, what does he say here?
Did somebody say they were there for For Notre Dame?
Yes, just a minute, please. Tell Herb to reboot.
That I got from Doris, can you please ask? So what do you say, suggest turn off his computer and reboot?
That's what I do.
Okay. All right, I will send that back to him.
Or a different browser.
To
Yeah, you can do that quietly while we do this, okay, For Notre Dame?
Yes.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Renee Fondacaro, the homeowner.
So the board has a wetland permit draft in front of them based upon a request that Nelson Pope Borjes to draft a wetland permit for those improvements on his property. For wishes, I can walk them through it very quickly, so it is a, a project on a happy property on the main road. It is in a, in a, a, it's a developed property with a single-family residence, decks and other improvements. The board had some dialogue with the applicant's agent over a few meetings and had the applicant and the applicant's agent had decided to remove a proposed swimming pool from the project foregoing, also the pool this time, they also agreed to remove some existing stairs that were in a non-performing location, not meeting 75-foot setbacks. Ultimately, the application was advised to include just a few small bump outs of existing residents, an addition of the residents over a portion of the deck, expansion of the existing deck by 51 square feet. And again, the demolition of the rear deck stairs that were not performing to the, to the 75-foot setback and a revegetation of the wetland buffer area to meet the 50-foot requirements. This is a type-two action. All of the proposed improvements do meet after the 285 wetland setbacks and appear to be in accordance with the board's request for any changes to, to the proposed improvements. No personal persistency review is required and therefore this permit is being issued with the standard conditions. And within these conditions are the US other conditions that we've discussed over the past two weeks. They're running through those very quickly. A continuous 50-foot buffer will be established, this is inclusive of the proposed 2,509 square foot native plant restoration within this buffer area. The construction debris will be outside gathered during and after the construction process. An erosion control fence will be installed around all proposed solar disturbance. Vehicles will remain on the site in this proposed stage area. Our commencement of this work, the copy of the permit will be discussed with the site contractor. All those activity, prevented activity will be slated to this wetland permit executed in a manner that does not impact neighboring properties or any neighboring weapons. A qualified professional is performing field inspection once a year for the initial three-year period to verify and ensure the viability of all new plants upon issuance of this particular property.
Brad, excuse me, how does that qualified and professional step up to the plate on this?
I don't know that that is actually defined.
We don't have protocols for that.
If that is something that the board may want to consider, you know, as we go forward with these
Okay.
I think it's maybe a little bit obvious as to somebody that would be qualified would be someone who is established landscaper, ecologist, someone with scientific background and understanding native plant species, someone that would have the ability to present and report their findings in some kind of written
Right. Yeah, I think more it was about who triggers that visit? So we, we've been looking at this for a while. Is it the building department reviews their permits and looks at wetlands approved projects and does an investigation annually, or how do we, how do we? That's right.
It's not the building department.
It's not clear who it does, yeah.
No, no, I think you said it's a certified whatever landscape.
Oh, no, I know who does it, I said who triggers.
So it said, so the permit condition says, I'll actually read the whole thing. This is qualified professional is performing field inspection once a year for a initial three-year period to verify and ensure the viability of all new plants upon issuance of this particular property. The building department office and village environmental consultant shall be notified upon, shall be notified of commencement, status and completion of the work.
Okay.
An 85, 100% total plant survival rate will be considered a successful plan after the initial three-year period. Annual summary reports including photographs, description of plant survival shall be submitted to the building department office and the village environmental consultant until the three-year period is complete and survival is demonstrated.
Okay.
That's pretty well documented, as you said.
But how do we know if they're not sending them in, the reports, how's that getting monitored?
That's an enforcement issue, I don't know.
Okay, so that's something.
Yeah, that's what we've, we, well, we were thinking about asking Doris to go back and look at all that stuff, I mean, like she has no other things to do during the day. And that's, that's part of the problem that I don't know that we had, we've figured that one out yet. That say of the 30 projects we've approved in the last 10 years that have landscape sensitive issues, how many of those have been looked at afterwards? Lili and I went to a house one time and then we were advised that we were out of our ballywack to do that.
Yeah, once we've signed off, we can't
Yeah.
own the property.
Yeah, and we saw like fencing. Saw it right on the water.
But you know, I think we could have this conversation separate from this permit because this is an overarching kind of
Yeah, you answered it, you answered the part of it, so sorry for the intrusion, and please
No, I think it's important to tie up on this sentence, you know, you're all correct and we should continue to polish this as we move forward.
Right, but we're not going to change it for this particular
I don't think it warrants it, but I do agree with you in the conversation.
Great.
And some of these might actually clarify some of the things that you have in your mind as well, because we have just a few more conditions. And I'm going to read these in completeness because I think these are the core ones. So a final survey prepared by a New York State licensed surveyor shall be submitted to the Harvard Committee upon completion of the approved activities. This survey shall demonstrate the location, dimension, area, calculations, and round and setbacks, all site improvements associated with the wetland permit. The established planted covenant buffer shall be clearly shown on, shown and labeled on the final survey. And then, once the proposed buffer area is planted, as depicted on the approved project plans and survey, it shall be inspected and approved by the environmental, the village's environmental consultant prior to the issuance of a certificate of access. So that sort of ties that loop, the whole on that. The buffer area shall be memorialized, the covenants and restrictions that identify the location and condition of the buffer to be maintained on the property. Impose restrictions to ensure preservation of the wetland buffer area. And it goes on to talk about, you know, the importance of the covenants, but, so you're really, I think, hitting the wetland buffer component pretty hard, at least in four different conditions of the approval. And you're also getting the ability to have a final say on whether or not executed site improvements are in accordance with all of the details that you approved as part of the permit with the final survey and our inspection. So those are all of the conditions, the plans that are associated with that are surveyed prepared by, and surveying dated October 18, 2023, and site plan, site plan set by GCG, architech slash revise October 18, 2023. With that said, the permit would be for a term of two years, and we believe the permit should be in order for the board's decision tonight.
Thank you. I guess
You want a motion?
Yeah, what, do I hear a motion to approve?
Yes, I make a motion to approve this permit as outlined by Brent just now.
Second?
I'll second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Brent. You can proceed and Okay, great, and Ms. Fondacaro, do you have any questions? Is she still on?
I'm on, I'm sorry, I, thank you very much, we don't have any questions, but I want to thank you very much.
Okay. Hello, Herb.
Hello, Will, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
We're going to jump to number two, we're going to hold off long point just for Do you mind if we do this? This lady has an appointment in Southampton at six. Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
So Lori Wolf here for David Burke and Lisa Lay, we just wanted to give you an update. Since the last meeting, we have filed a variance application for the accessory structures in the front yard being the waterside. We have determined that the poolhouse will have a bathroom and that the IA system will be utilized for that as well. We have shown the buffer covenant, 50-foot buffer covenant or covenanted buffer on the survey as well as the wetland setbacks to the structures that was requested. And we were working on the construction methodology and protocol. I was just holding off on submitting everything until we have that, but that is it for me.
There was a pool and a pickleball court.
Pickleball, right.
Pickleball and pool.
And what's the, what, what have you learned from ZBA from that?
Nothing, we've only submitted the application.
Just submitted an application.
It's very, not very likely we're going to end up on the December agenda because of the notification period, most likely going to be January.
But can't you get a preliminary assessment from the building inspector as to whether they're permitted and where they're permitted, so forth?
And they have, there is precedent for accessory structures on the waterside of the residence.
Really? Really?
Yes.
A, a pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, it's a lovely pool, in short.
Right.
Well, actually, that's true.
Of course it is.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean it's a slam dunk.
It does not mean it's a slam dunk, but there is precedent. And I don't think anyone in the neighborhood wants to see the accessory structures on the other side of the house.
I'm not sure everybody wants to see a pool and a pickleball court on the pond side.
Right.
So there may be some vocalizations to that, but not here, CPA.
Right, yeah, so we'll get, we'll get there when we get there, but the building inspector did say there is precedent for pools.
Thank you, thank you for.
You're requesting an adjournment, then?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have all the materials submitted to you, you don't have to wait on the zoning board determination to just to render a determination here. Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So you're requesting an adjournment until you get a determination from the zoning board?
Yes, but I will make a resubmission with all these things so we can continue discussing them, like our construction protocol in case of issues.
Right, I think what we do is we just adjourn it for a month, and then you come back and let us know where you are in the pecking order with the ZBA.
But that, and also, I'll have submitted the construction protocol and revised surveys, and if there's any comments from any of you, we can address them at that meeting.
I don't, well, from my point of view, I don't think we want to entertain them until we know that it's something that's going to be approved.
Right.
You know?
Well, that's true, but then if we come back after that and you have issues with the construction protocol, we don't have the ability to.
I don't think we're going to have any problems with the protocol of how it's put together.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
All right. So I make a motion to table this until, Doris, when is it, the next meeting?
Our next meeting is January fourth.
I make a motion to table this application until January fourth, twenty twenty-four?
Hold on a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking me in.
Drive carefully.
Head into it.
Okay, twenty-two long point.
After our last hearing, we had discussions with the client, and we'd like to submit a proposal to you of moving the house back. I mean, we had, I believe that it was asked at least twice, maybe three times, whether the client was willing to move the house further back from the wetlands, and we had that discussion with client. And at the structure, the client is prepared to move the house back ten feet further from the wetlands, so instead of being, the house being at fifty feet, it would be at sixty feet, and we would go to the ZBA for the request to be twenty feet from the street rather than thirty feet from the street, as well as any pyramid of variance that would be required. We haven't done the calculations because we want to see what you thought about that. Currently, the proposed buffer is at fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one square feet. I know that since the original application was submitted, it's right now at fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one square feet. By moving the house further, ten feet away, it would increase the buffer by six hundred square feet at minimum, but it may increase it by more. We have to certainly work out the areas of the driveway, but at minimum, it would be another six hundred square feet. So right now, you have fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one, it'll, it would go up, you know, almost to fifteen thousand square feet. As you well know, even though, since we started, the utility shed has gone, the boardwalks have been removed, the area for the parking has gone down in size, and all the paving has gone away. So I, I know that we were talking about increasing the distance, or that is, the board was saying that whether we could, what, what we could do to increase the distance, and what we could do to expand the wetland buffer, because that's what was brought up by Chick last time, that any increase helps. So this is our proposal to you, and if you like it, that is, taking it further back by ten feet from the street, increasing the buffer area, then we would draw up the site plan and submit it to you and go to the ZBA. We haven't gone through that exercise because we wanted to see how you felt about that proposal.
Well, I, I think it would be, I mean, none of us can speak for the board as a whole here as to what we would agree to or, or not agree to. We could give individual, you know, opinions. So I mean, I don't think you're going to get a, you know, a board-wide approval of, oh, yeah, we like this, and, you know. I, I mean, I think we've got, there's still some questions. I mean, one, I want to make clear when you're, when you're moving the, the house toward the road or toward the, the Ligonie Brook or Paints Creek side, you know, you have taken the position that, that the setbacks don't apply on that side, I believe, and.
When you say setbacks, you mean the.
The wetland setbacks don't apply on that side because of the road.
Yes.
And, and some of us at least don't agree with that, all right? So I want you to know in advance, because we don't believe there's any exemption there that, for several reasons, and one of which i- is that the septic system does not meet the setbacks, and that section clearly says if, if, if the septic system meets the setbacks. We've also got jurisdiction based upon the other side, the Morris Cove side wetlands. So I don't think you should plan on moving the road, moving the house toward that side without considering moving it farther toward the wetlands. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what the, what, what the distance is to the, you know, to the, to the wetlands.
The house or the, or the septic?
The house.
Everyone has this drawing.
Which you can't ignore the wetlands on that side, what I'm saying.
I would be able to resolve that issue, that jurisdiction stops at the road.
No, no, no way.
Well, okay, because that's what was discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, that was discussed, but it was not, was not resolved, and I, I won't agree with it, you know. I, I, our environmental consultant doesn't agree with it and has issued something contesting it. The, so I'm just telling you that, you know, that's my opinion anyway.
Right.
And there's some further basis for, you know, for that. Second, you know.
I misunderstood. At the last hearing, I thought we went through this, and I know that, Mr. Parker, you said that you disagreed, but that, I thought there had been a, a decision made that, that the road stops jurisdiction for, for wetlands purposes. I, I, I've taken note that you don't agree.
And, and I, again, I think, I think there are other members of the board who don't agree with that, and, and, you know, we have a memo from, from Nelson Pope of Voorhees that, that challenges that. So I'm just saying for you to keep that in mind, I didn't want you to make these changes on some assumption that, that there was.
Well, we wouldn't make.
I think that's why they're here.
The board, that's what I'm here to discuss with you, and I was not aware that Nelson Pope and Voorhees had made a legal determination that the road doesn't stop, I mean, I'm now totally.
Can we hear Chick speak briefly on, on that specific point? We have him online here. I'd like, Chick, could you just speak briefly, maybe summarize what the, what the issue is there?
Sure. So chapter two eighty-five identifies areas that are not subject to the regulations. Our review, I think it's dated July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, raised that issue, and in Intersciences' response, I believe it was September ninth, they did address it and provided some background information that they felt was relevant for that consideration. You know, ultimately, it's a legal code provision, so I think that if there are questions or concerns, that Liz should review that in detail and provide input to the Harvard Committee. But for the purpose of identifying the issue, we did indicate that if you take the black letter wording of that section of the code, it would appear that jurisdiction would apply based on the fact that the septic system does not meet setbacks. And again, that was responded to by Intersciences, but I don't think it's been fully resolved to the satisfaction of the Harvard Committee at this time.
Chick, I'm not, I didn't understand that. What, you were suddenly talking about the septic system, the septic system in terms of the road? What, what were you, I'm sorry.
It's the exact, it's the exact language in chapter two eighty-five.
Right.
That identifies that, I can pull it up if you give me a minute, and we can read it directly, but that is what I'm referring to, is the black letter wording in chapter two eighty-five.
Is it septic systems or is it all structures?
No, it's just.
No, it's, it's specific to the septic system.
Okay.
There were three parameters, one having to do with drainage, one having to do with septic, and the other, I'll have to refer to the code.
Okay.
But primarily, the septic was what didn't comply, and we had raised that issue back in July.
Now, in addition, that this, this further jurisdiction because of the wetlands on the other side, so one way or the other, this jurisdiction is, and this is setback, you know, issue. But further, I was trying to address the issue of, of the septic system, because you've got a septic system that's, it's way off in, in terms of meeting the setbacks, you know, to the wetlands, and I don't think you've addressed that in any way. If I recall correctly, is it, is it a hundred-foot setback, Chick, to the wetlands? It's required? I, I believe, I believe it's, I believe it's a hundred feet that's required and, and the measurement.
The sanitary system.
Yeah, the septic, yes, and where, where, and you're at thirty-three feet, I mean, it's not even close to meeting.
A minimum of a hundred feet, yes.
It's, it's not even close to meeting the setback, and I haven't seen anything proposed here to, you know, to address that. So I'm just, you know, I mean, I don't want to get any huge discussion today, I mean, you haven't submitted anything new here, but, but I, I don't want you, I don't want you to go out of here thinking that you resolved all of the issues except for, except for moving the house, because that's not the case.
If the board is not receptive as a majority to this being proposed, then.
I don't think moving the house closer to the street is a silver bullet. To me, and again, like John, I think I'm just speaking for myself, to me, it's the size of the house, you know, and the code says you get eight hundred square feet, and I'm like, okay, you get eight hundred square feet.
We're trying to build a single-family dwelling that's not, that is going to be used by a family, and we can't, this is not a, a stamp in time, the sanitary system doesn't change, as we indicated to you, they, the sanitary system, this is a minimum-sized sanitary system, so I can't, you know, the health department doesn't make a variation.
No, no, we're kind of talking about different things. I think John has a good point about the sanitary system and the thing that I come back to more than the distance from the road or from, is just the size of the house. It's like, the code says eight hundred square feet, okay, but your footprint is twelve hundred square feet, and you're, you know, egregiously going beyond setbacks, setback, you know, house to the wetlands, septic to the wetlands, but yet you're taking just, I, I, I don't hate, I, I don't like the way I'm sounding, but it just.
I, 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 I'm taking down.
You know, it just, you know, I think we need to be thinking really minimal.
You're looking at your document saying that eight hundred square foot footprint is, is.
Full stop.
You know, that's, that's what we've been discussing almost for a year, the, the notion of the eight hundred square foot, and we, yes, you.
Well, as you, the, the, the twelve hundred includes more, it's not habitable space that you're, you're looking at.
But it's still footprint.
Yeah, we, I, I don't want to, I don't want to spend the evening talking about this. We had this discussion at the last meeting, and you haven't presented any change in your application other than to ask us about going to ZBA.
Because I think that's okay, they came to say, is this going to be, is this going to solve your problems in any way? And I think we're kind of saying, no, not really, that that's like a minor part of it, and it's not going to, you know, turn us warm and fuzzy.
Moving the house further back is, is not, is something that you are.
Silver bullet.
Okay.
No, no, I didn't, no, wait a second, hold on, that's, we're, we're trying to be helpful here, okay? And I'm trying, I'm trying to explain, I, I'm not against moving the house back, okay? I mean, I, I'm saying it probably would be an improvement to move the house, I'm just saying it's not the only issue. I, I just don't want you to leave here and, and, and thinking, oh, if we get approval to move the house back, we're fine, that's, I'm, you know, okay? I mean, it's, 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 it could be an improvement, but it's not the only issue. That's, it's the best way for me to say it, okay? I, I mean, I.
I, I clearly understand.
At the same time.
It may be an improvement, but it's not going to generate an approval of the proposal.
Exactly, not necessarily.
I can't speak for the whole, I can't speak for the whole board. I could also say that there may be other things that you could ask at the same time. You could ask for a smaller footprint, for instance.
Can I, how many feet from the road then is the septic system if you move the house ten feet? The sanitary system doesn't move because it has to be a hundred. It stays the same. So the health department requires a hundred feet from, from surface waters. Yes. And basically, right now, where it's at, meets the hundred feet from surface waters on both sides.
So that's not moving.
But it doesn't meet the wetlands.
It doesn't meet the wetlands, but it meets the health department requirement of, a sanitary system has to be a hundred feet from surface water.
But it's separate from the wetland.
Which is separate from the wetland.
This is a separate regulatory agency, so they require a hundred feet from, from surface waters, and the existing sanitary system where it's proposed meets that requirement, all right? If I move it anywhere, it won't meet.
That requirement.
The health department, okay? So the wetlands is, there's two separate wetlands jurisdictions, yours, okay? The New York City EC, they've signed off, and there's the health department for where it has to be in relation to open water.
Right.
So if I move, there's no moving the sanitary system because of the health department.
Well, in that case, even if they made the house smaller, it would be the same problem because the septic system would have to stay in the same place, right?
Right, what we're trying to do is compromise, and.
Yes, the water is further away, obviously.
Right.
And the wetlands is landward, so they use, the health department uses the water as a midpoint, so I can't, I can't move the, I can't move the sanitary.
Okay, we got that.
And you can't be downsized in any way, is, is there a technology which would allow you to, to, to downsize it?
Now, this is state-of-the-art system as far as how much, you know, how it processes the wastewater and, and how it, it, you know, it would be, so.
Michael Chano, each side research associate, some path to the applicant. The, I did, I had spoken with BBV about the design of the system, it is a, it's a pressurized system, so that is actually the smaller that the leaching field can actually be, and also the most shallow that it can be. So it could potentially be smaller, but then you wind up with a whole hundred filled in one place, so that's not going to really work. So these are the smallest based on that provision. And just real quick on the side of the house, we have spoken about this before, that it's eight hundred square feet, but, and I've submitted a letter from the building inspector about this, but we are also allowed up to two hundred square feet of.
Right, you're allowed that, but you're coming here and you're asking us to like, Ben, what the setbacks are, and we're kind of going like.
Yeah, but that's, it's eight hundred square feet plus the two hundred, it's not eight hundred flat across the board.
Well, me, talking about myself, I'd like to see you do eight hundred flat across the board and make the accessory rooms on top of the house and keep that footprint as small as possible. And that doesn't mean, well, I get two hundred for this, and then I have external stairwells and this, that, and the other, so suddenly you have fifty percent more than the eight hundred minimum. All the while, you're, you know, there's an incursion into our setbacks, so that's kind of like, I'm going, no.
I understand, I just want to make sure that it was clear that we technically could go up to a thousand just in terms of interior space, so that, that's based on the information from the building inspector, I just want to make sure that was.
Yeah, on a lot that's otherwise non-encumbered, that's the point of that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's something that I think we probably all understand, and we're saying it in different ways, this lot has encumbrances on it, and we are trying to work with you to mitigate in any way we possibly can. So we've got the smallest IA system, we don't have the smallest footprint yet.
Right.
And we have been talking about that ad nauseam, and we, we need to hear, we need to see.
They're talking about Stuart, oh, yeah, yeah.
Kevin, unmute it.
So I don't know where to go from here.
And, and I'm going to finish right, very quickly, I mean, just, you could, I'm just going to say you could ask for other relief from the zoning board at the same time as you're trying to, if, if you're trying to move the house, that's all, and, and it might be, might include the footprint size, I'm just suggesting that, I'm, you know.
The, the, the board, this property has twenty thousand square feet of wetland, and, 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 I mean, I just want the board to be aware that we're proposing. And and and, I mean, I just want the board to be aware that we're proposing with that area, I mean, not even just just the footprint of the house, buffering a lot of that upland. So, you know, I I, when you're, when you're looking at, I'd like, I'd like for you to please relook at it as a whole picture, that this lot has twenty thousand square feet of upland. And yes, there is going to be a house footprint that may exceed eight hundred square feet, but the remaining balance of it toward the water side of upland is all going to be buffered. Okay, so, you know, that, I think that that adds to mitigation, all right? And we're not talking about planting lawn or or having other improvements on the side on the water side. So I will go back, I mean, we will go back to to the owners and and discuss what was discussed here. And it's helpful that you're saying that, well, moving the house is only a one step in the right direction. I'll relate to that.
Right, right.
Okay.
And increasing the buffer is is a is a positive. I think we asked you at the last meeting if you could increase the buffer and 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 you were reluctant to say that you could.
No, I would come back and say.
So 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 increasing that, and maybe it can be increased further. But those are just suggestions.
And this is kind of a free-floating kind of anxiety I have. I went and I looked, and I mentioned this at a previous meeting. I went and I looked at the property from the water side, and the property right next to it that's had some landscaping and buffer, there's a lot of erosion going on there.
I I brought this to the client's attention.
Yeah.
And they're saying that Summerfield is going to be rectified, that they don't want it to be looking, you know, I said, you know, they survivability, et cetera, and the client said to me specifically, after the two principles of that LLC said,
Right.
we are not going to allow the property to be road, you know, we have Summerfield on it, and that it would be remediated.
Yeah, I'm just, I think that there's like, and I think Summerfield is excellent.
Summerhill.
Summerhill.
Summerhill, sorry.
Summerhill.
But.
Summerhill.
Those guys.
Yes, so they are the ones that are responsible for for their landscaping, and I brought it to, I told you I would bring it to their attention. And I did bring it to their attention.
Thank you.
And and so.
Who are you dealing with at Summerhill?
I I don't know. I'm not dealing with it, but that's who is apparently handles their maintenance and landscaping.
So it just, it just concerns me that you can have just best-laid plans, and it's really hard to stop water. You know, and there's a lot of.
Well, there's half an acre, I mean, as I said, there's twenty thousand square feet of upland, and we are proposing to buffer pretty much everything between the house and the water on on on, that's what's being proposed.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Do we need a motion?
I think we're going to table this, make a motion, make a motion to table this on January fourth.
Yeah. So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
That's motion. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 So we will see you first week of January.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sixty-four, Jermaine, is there anybody here?
Dennis.
Is there somebody here for six, for Joel, for Jermaine, sixty-four Jermaine?
Yes, I'm so sorry, I'm logging in late.
You know, I I just received this information today, I think. Is that correct, yours?
Oh, yesterday.
Yeah, so I don't think we're going to talk about it. I don't mean to be rude, but we have a protocol. This has to be submitted on the Friday before. And that's not the case, and I I, there's just too many other things on our table.
Uh, yeah, well, it's a, it's a, it's a very short conversation. I understand you had requested the lot be reflagged. And that's, that's what we've done. I don't believe there's any other conversation other than that, and we'll wait for your review on it.
Yeah, we just have to have our environmental consultant take a look at it. I mean, they haven't had a chance to to go over it, I don't, I don't think, unless it's some particular questions they have to point out, but we just didn't plan to look at it because we hadn't received.
I thought it was also downsized from four to three.
Do you have anything to say?
Units?
All I was going to say is just a sort of, John, there was a request, updated site plan to show the actual downsizing.
Right.
Right.
And what we received, and I just saw these as well. And I'm reluctant to talk about this because we did not get them, you know, in time, but just move things along. This, we seemingly received two different plans.
Right.
Should the wetland boundary updated, we're using the same. Fine. The other one shows the wetland boundary updated with what? A site plan. It that stands across that says site plan to revise for three. But it's going to verify the option that we're looking at in the original site plan that actually shows the property of wetland boundary.
Sad question again.
Is it Mr. Silverstein?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I I can now. There was a little bit of background noise before.
Good.
I'm sorry about that, yeah. So all I was saying is, we received two sets of plans. One is what appears to be the existing conditions with the updated wetland boundary shown, which is um, fine, we're good with that one. And then also, there is another plan that shows the updated wetland boundary on what appears to be the proposed site plan. But it's a big red stamp across it that says site plan to be revised for three units total. I was just asking if you could clarify whether or not we would be getting another plan that actually shows the proposed site plan with three units.
Sure, so the 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 building footprint doesn't change, as you're aware, it's an existing building. Uh, so the only, you know, that notice just indicating that what's happening on the interior of the building is changing from four to three. That survey is is being redone by Michael Hemmer now. Uh, so we, you know, we're happy to submit that, but that will also be submitted with our building application to the building department. But as far as the, in relation to the wetlands boundary, there's nothing that changes on the site from the three to the four units or the four to the three.
All all of the parking is the same?
Yes.
So I think that that's fine, but this goes back to your record, you know?
Yeah, consistency.
So I could, I totally agree. I saw this today, and I said, ah, this is.
Okay, so, yeah.
I would, I would recommend, Mr. Silverstein, that you submit a clean copy that that at least has this red stamp removed so that there's an understanding that what the board is approving, one shows the updated wetland boundary, which it does, and two is reflective of the actual site plan. And that's just for clarity in the record. I think that they've already agreed that they're willing to issue the department extension. We're just trying to through the record to make sure.
Four pools.
The rule clearly matches what's.
Curb cut here doesn't feel like a good idea.
Other than that, I have no technical comments because we just.
Okay, so we will see you in January.
Great.
And we're.
Thank you, thank you so.
So, I'm sorry, my colleague here just counted four pools here in this floor plan. When you have three units, are you still going to have four pools?
No, it'll have three.
Okay.
So, so we're not going to talk about this. You're going to give us a revised plan, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
A good project.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Nice art piece, by the way.
Oh, what's that?
What is that art piece? What is that?
Oh, this, this is, uh, these are sections from acrylic tubes, from acrylic paint tubes that are mounted to antique postcards.
Wow.
I wish I could, I wish I could take credit for making it myself.
You don't have to.
Thank you.
Have a great day, guys. Thank you so much.
Holidays.
Happy holidays.
Okay, so do we need to table this? Make a motion to table this until January fourth?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So.
Good night, guys.
Mary and Jim. And here's the parking requirements. All this needs to be updated. Isn't that what we said last month?
Yes. So we will see you January.
Fourth, twenty twenty-two.
So you got the motion, right? I think that brings us to a very quick, satisfying.
Why, why don't we take a moment to read the minutes and just get these done?
Okay.
Let me also suggest that we have a decision that was supposed to be circulated for signatures, and it never made it down this.
Oh, sorry about that, John.
The doors will be looking for it afterwards and looking.
Right, running down the stairs, looking for you.
Need a pen. Here you go. Thank you.
Discuss typos?
Not one of them.
We haven't heard anything about Steinbeck property parking. So we haven't heard about.
So I would just say, under here, under discussion, a proposed doc for the rowing club. Um, it's under discussion item, and it's October fifth.
Item seven.
Yeah, down seven dash one, bottom of the page. So it's, you know where we are?
October fifth.
So it says we discuss the proposed doc, and we're in support. I don't remember that so much. I remember our being a little bit more qualified. Like, they wanted something that was going to go out sixty feet, and I remember saying, gee, couldn't you think about doing something that's just forty feet, because this is something that's kind of a prefab thing that they could do forty feet now and potentially make it sixty, but they don't even have the skulls that are the size that would necessitate that long.
Sorry, I have a note on that, too.
Yeah, so I think we might just want to hedge this in support and just say, had questions and encourage the app, the.
One of the questions that came up was about the neighbor, because he said that there was some neighbor came out and yelled at the kids sometimes, and it's very close to the neighbor's property, and we'd asked about.
But I don't think that's really like.
I just remember it coming up, and we'd asked them if they'd come back to.
You should bring the neighbor.
Like, what was going to be the outcome?
Bring the neighbor to the meeting.
Something like that, I don't remember, but it was.
Well, we could say we expressed concern about, you know, the contiguous properties or adjoining properties. But I think just say that the board discussed the proposed doc and had some hesitations about the um, the scope or the scale, or the scope and scale of the plans and suggested that perhaps it could be downsized. Blah, 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 something like that. See what they come back with. I kind of hate to leave this in here like, oh, yeah, we were rah rah rah, when in fact, we were sort of like, oh, that's interesting. Can you make it a little smaller? Thank you. Yeah, I mean. How did we have a Harvard committee meeting on October thirty-first?
Yeah, exactly.
We did. It was an executive session.
Oh. Exactly, so sit right there. I'm, Jim Shield was here before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like.
Yes, he was. He introduced himself.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, this is his second. Yeah.
I was. I don't remember that.
I I remember very specifically, he came up just to, as just a
Say hi.
Meet and greet. Yeah.
Okay.
That's nice.
Uh, John, could I ask you to and Elizabeth, maybe you can apply on this, but it it seems like the the dock mooring thing is a big deal. And John has got a pretty good command of particularly what's going on between East Hampton trustees and Seg Harbor. Could John sit with Jean Kane and the gentleman that was speaking today so that there's kind of continuity in all of this? I don't, I, I don't think Jean knows the history, like John, and I think actually we should do some kind of formal. Because I've actually heard from various groups, the issue of hedge money with the 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 moorings, because it's a, it's a lot of money out there.
Yeah, right, everybody's talking about it.
And I I think John really has a handle on this that would illuminate that the the issue, and I know John's occupied with other things, but if.
I'll I'll send out, I'll send out some information that'll explain it.
But if you, if you could meet with with Jean before the trustee meeting, and I think this should be brought up to the trustee meeting uh, sooner rather than later, because, have you seen that document with the new layout?
Yeah, tag along on that.
Yeah, I don't know if this is something that would be on the village board of trustees' agenda unless they put it on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah.
So it.
You can have a discussion with your liaison and see when when it would be an opportunity.
Okay, so I'll set that up. I'll I'll talk to Jean and bring John in.
I'm 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 not going to be able to do anything before the meeting on Tuesday.
Right.
And I'm going to be out of town.
That agenda is already set, I believe, so.
Okay.
But you can always have a conference call.
I'm not in charge of anybody's agenda, so you can talk to the board and see what they.
But I mean, I certainly can 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 talk between now and the January meetings, for instance, there's certainly discussion.
It would be good for us, too, to be brief, just applications are coming to us. We don't really know how this will work.
I did have an update on a litigation matter from this board.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanted to move into executive session, or if you wanted to wait to the next meeting to discuss it.
Let's talk about it now. Let's let's close off the.
Well, let's, let's approve these minutes.
Yeah.
So we can, um.
Yeah.
Just let me breeze through this.
I don't have any objections to the minutes that I've seen. Other than a typo, comeback is two words. But I'm not going to call you on it.
Nice. Okay. So. I guess there's three different meetings that we need to approve, Doris.
Okay, the first was.
This is just one comment on the November meeting that I'm just trying.
This is just one, one comment on the November meeting that I'm just trying to find the correct spot here for. Which one are we doing?
Well, let's start with October 5th.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of October 5th?
I would like to do that with the, with the comment that I made before, under the discussion item number one. Right. So I would make a motion to approve minutes of October 5th, subject to some slight modification of discussion item number one.
Doris, can you?
I have that.
Okay. Do I hear a second? All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Okay, so noted, so October 5th goes into the history book. October 31st is the executive meeting and these are, we need to, I guess, approve these minutes, minutes?
I was not present, so.
Since we can't talk about what.
There's nothing there, just to tie me in.
Okay, all those in favor of approving?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 31st executive session?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, October 31st is in the history books.
November 2nd?
November 2nd.
The, the only one that, under the, uh, one tabled wetlands, a 22 long point. I just wanted to, just for the record, it's, it's, it says it was tabled until the next meeting. I just want to make it clear that it was tabled at the request of the applicant. Okay? And it was one of the points that we wanted to make in terms of, of the minutes that where the applicant makes the request, that it's in the minutes for the rec, for the record, so that we know how many, how many times.
Right. Oh, good point.
By, by the applicant and that, you know, it's, it can't be said that we put it off.
Okay, all right. Can I hear a motion to approve the November 2nd meeting?
I make a motion to approve November, whatever you said.
Second.
Second.
Oh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so November 2nd minutes are in the history book. Thank you. Having said that, I would like to hear a motion to adjourn our meeting. Oh, yeah. So we don't have to adjourn and then go into exec, no, because we're still here. So do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
This is to discuss litigation, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll bring down the cone of silence.
I'll make a second. I'm sorry, I'll make a second.
I did. We need to turn off the Zoom?
Yes.
Yes. Bye, Herb.
We need to close the doors?
Okay.